But we need to decide whether or not we're going to have a road cleanup day. Maybe find out what other people or what other municipalities are doing, given the COVID-19 restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. And not only that, there has to be a meeting ahead of time, of course, where we tell people about orange vests and trash bags and where to leave stuff and what safety looks like and traffic control and where are we going to hold that meeting and keep people safe for that meeting? I don't know that it can happen or can't happen. I don't have a position on one way or the other, except that I want to be, certainly want to be safe as it relates to our responsibility to the public. How does council feel?
You on the Clean Communities Committee, Mr. Dills?
What's that?
Are you on the Clean Communities Committee?
I don't think so.
So why are you making the presentation for the committee?
Because it was me that got the call from the residents. I'm on Public Works, Mr. Corinno is responsible for pulling this stuff. Are you interrupting me again?
Yes, like you did with me.
Let me finish. And so I asked the clerk to put it on the agenda because it's something we need to talk, we need to resolve, we haven't talked about it, we need to resolve what we're going to do about.
Well, I thought I saw an email a couple of weeks back from Mrs. Owen indicating that they picked a date when they want to have Clean Community. And I agree, that's just fine, let's do it.
That is, that is for Dumpster Day. The date of October 20th, Mr. Dills, is it 24th?
Saturday the 24th.
Yeah, October 24th, we are going to do Dumpster Day. That's a definite. But as far as the road cleanup, we need to discuss that. I'm not sure if we want to go ahead with that, or if we're required to, or if we've already had the funding, or we'll have to return that. That, that, those answers, I don't know.
What are other towns doing? Are they going to be having their Clean Community Day?
If I may, I, I helped three other municipalities and they are going to go forward with their Cleanup Day. And the state, they come out from the New Jersey Clean Communities Council that they lifted the restrictions so that municipalities can go ahead and have a Cleanup Day. We do have the funds that's sent to us automatically, and we will not send the money back. It's going to stay with us. There's, there's nothing to say that we have to send it back, so obviously, we're not, definitely not going to send it back. Good to see.
Here's my thought. I, I, I think we should, if we, if we don't have to send it back, I would much rather participate in an extra one next year, once we know what, how the world is going to be, rather than to take the risk of people communicate, like getting too close to each other, picking up trash in the right spot, handing bags to person to person, and if you were going to wear gloves, then we're giving them glove and protective wear, protective gear to wear, that we take it back and it's been worn. Like that, they're just risks that I prefer not to do.
I agree.
Is there any way of how those vests could be sanitized after they're used, like thrown in the wash?
I, I don't want to take the risk of even touching them.
I think, Betsy, you, you had a, a good idea to perhaps maybe just hold off and do it next year, because the, the funds will roll into a line item into our grant fund. So if you don't use money from year to year, we have a line item that goes into the grant fund, and that's, that's how towns perhaps sometimes save up the money to buy various, like trash containers and things like that, so.
I made the motion every table discussion of Clean Communities until the March meeting.
I have a question, I'm sorry, I was talking and you interrupted me.
I made a motion.
My understanding that if we have that money, that would be held in special escrow?
No.
Not to be mixed into the general fund?
It does not get mixed into the general fund. We have to allocate it in the revenue section of our current fund, and then we have to appropriate it into the, the current fund, but it is paid out of the grant fund, which is part of the current fund, but it, you cannot use this money for anything else. It stays in a line item and it accumulates from year to the year when towns have monies left over.
Primarily for purchasing the blowers, anyone?
That is correct. Anything to clean up the streets, you can, you can use this money for. There's other things as far as equipment. Some towns have purchased brush hogs, they call it, or brush mowers, dumpsters, I've been in Montana, purchased some dumpsters for, for trash to be thrown in. Trash containers, litter signs, entrance signs to the community if you put the Clean Communities logo on it. So there are some ways to expend this money. But this town brings in 25 to 30 groups, they're from all over the place.
Yeah, no.
They only get like $250, and that's how it's been run. It's not like that in other towns as far as having that many groups, but this town does it that way.
I think it's time to change the way that it's been done, and quite frankly, if we could purchase equipment with it, maybe we can get the word out and people can adopt it to the streets where they live and clean up the streets themselves. That's a good option.
Yeah, well.
I think you can chair the Clean Communities Committee and get your plan going.
Yes, yeah, let the committee discuss it.
I wasn't thinking of the complexities or the draft. Do we purchase equipment?
Well, it's limited.
Well, I.
So let, let the committee discuss that, but I think for now, Mayor, what I'm hearing is that we, we may want to just postpone it for next year. Also, you do have the option of doing it.
I, I make a motion to postpone it to at least to revisit it in January.
Mr. Dilch?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
I, I will say this, come next year, if I'm not on that committee, I'll be more than happy to help out on that day. I'm not trying to get out of work.
Moving down here to committees, there was some discussion about consolidating committees. I sent over my version of consolidating these committees and boxing them into, I think I got it down to five basic committees, and there was a total of 18 committees, not 36. It was 18 separate committees in which there was two members per committee, so it was only 18 committees. But now it's down to five, I sent it over to the clerk. I would imagine that it was distributed to all members of council. So, once again, I don't know what this is going to accomplish, and would love to be able to understand how this is going to benefit the community. Maybe the procurer of the idea could explain in fine detail how this is going to really save the city from all the problems we've had over the years, how this is really going to just make everything go away that's wrong with the town.
Sure, I'll take the, I'll take the floor. So the reason why I wanted to do this is because a lot of towns have it down to four committees or five committees, and the mayor serves on each one. In the past, you have said that you're not in constant communication with all of us, and you wanted, and there's been decisions that have been made in the past that were made without you being aware. So my thought was, if we combine them to four committees, we, each council person would have one committee, and they would serve as a chair or co-chair, and you would serve as the other, the other half of the, of the membership for that. So then this way, nothing would be done or nothing would happen without you being talked to first, or you being advised of first. When I approached that to you, because these are the issues that you've come up with, you say, "No, I'm way too busy for that." So then I figured, well, if we.
Busy for some of the committees that I'm not really wanting to be serving on. One of them was the Clean Communities, that's always worked fine, the way that it was done. I'm not well versed in technology, I don't need to be. There's a number of committees that I don't necessarily really have to be on them. That's why we have a city council. We don't have a one-man council. We have a, a, there's five. They'll be dispersed between various members of council. It doesn't put too much responsibility or just too much emphasis on any one particular person. I am not looking to sit on every committee.
So if we're, if we are a member of council with five members, then the majority of us have voted to consolidate. So that's what we want to do.
And I gave you my version of what I thought would be a, 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 a way of how these would be boxed together so that way there, anything that's, you have public safety, you have public works, fire prevention, there was one or two others, I thought.
We read it.
It was in the one box. So I gave you what I have.
So I make a motion to, to accept Betsy's version of the consolidation of committees. Do I have a second?
So it's a, it's a done deal, there's no something you can do in a, a honor book that's already been decided.
I have a comment I'd like to make on it. I think that we should all keep, I'm sorry, you done there?
You've, you've been very insulting tonight to me, Mr. Dills, and for the last several months, and I don't know what's gotten into you. I have never treated you that way, ever, not once, and you've been throwing it with me, and I don't know why. You're being a Christian man, you're certainly not acting like a Christian man to me.
Are you attacking my care?
Sorry, that's really the truth. You're supposed to treat people the way you want to be treated, and if you're going to talk to me the way you've been talking to me lately, Nelson, I will give it right back to you. And I'll tell you, if I give it back, it's going to be certainly not the way you want it.
Are you done?
So either we're going to respect one another, or we're going to cooperate, or if you want to talk to me like I'm dirt, I'll give it right back to you, and I don't have no problem with that.
Are you done?
It's up to you. You want to act like a Christian man? I will be more than glad to honor you as a Christian man. You want to talk to me like I'm scum? I could give it right back. And you have been talking to me like I'm scum. You're going to be ashamed of yourself the way you've been talking to me after I've been your friend for all these years, and this is how you treat me? Stabbing me in my back? Very, very highly unprofessional, and I've lost a lot of respect. We can get it right back to where it used to be, but I'll tell you right now, I'm not going to tolerate your shit.
This is a meeting, Mayor.
That's exactly correct. You've been talking to me all night like I'm scum. You're trying to make me look like I'm stupid, you keep on interrupting me, and I don't appreciate it. Now, if you want to continue with that pattern, let's move it along, and I'll say, "Sure, let's go, let's dance." Now, we're going to move over to the next item, purchasing of blowers.
There's a motion on the floor.
And what is the motion?
Mr. Olson? You said, no, Mrs. Owen made it.
Yes, I made the motion to accept my version of it. However, and Mr. Olson made a second, however, you had a comment. Your comment, please?
My comment is that we should keep an open mind as it relates to committee structure, a number of committees and committee responsibilities. This is our first endeavor into altering it. We will probably find through this that we should change it again, either make it bigger or make it smaller, change, perhaps change responsibilities to some committees a little bit. This is not a scorecard. We're not taking March 2 or, you know, 4 against each other, or what we've decided to do, we're simply trying to find a better way to do things. So keep an open mind and, 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 you know, be aware that we may see still better ways to amend the process.
I think this should be like a living, like document kind of thing that needs to be amended anytime we see anything. With, with that, with that being said, I know we still have to vote. I also think and want to meet with the mayor, if he wants to talk about this, and come up with the definition of the duties, what's the responsibilities, if there's reports that need to be done monthly, what events are covered under those things, just so, because when I've come onto this and someone gave me a, an assignment on accounts on, in a specific committee, I had absolutely no idea what my responsibilities are, and I don't want that to happen to someone going forward.
And that's precisely the point. We were supposed to have had a personnel meeting, even as of tonight, we were supposed to go into closed session to discuss the powers and the duties of the city council and the mayor, and we're still not getting to that level yet. And now it's past nine o'clock, and we're not going to do it, because I wanted to watch the debate tonight, not listen to this debate. So we're not going to have a special meeting so we can discuss. Mr. Lafferty, you had indicated that we were going to have a, a, a meeting one night so that we could discuss, and we would do it in closed session. Obviously, it's not going to be tonight, because I don't want, I'm aggravated, I don't even want to listen to much more, quite frankly. So we will have a special meeting when we can all calm down and act like ladies and gentlemen, and respect one another as members of city council, rather than trying to overpower, strong-arm, and humiliate, which is what this meeting has become tonight. I'm really disappointed with a couple of this.
I think a point of parliamentary order, there's a motion and a second.
Yes.
I think you need to vote on that motion.
Go ahead, make the roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
No. Next.
We make a motion to, to, to have a committee to make up the rules and regulations and the definitions of.
We're going to have a closed session, personnel meeting, that the solicitor has advised, and we're going to go get through that first. And then we should have a committee put together, all right?
Mr. Olson seconded.
Not on the agenda.
Well, it's not in the.
The committees are on the agenda.
Mr. Lafferty, can you explain a conversation that you and I had a couple of months back where we absolutely have to have a private session, a personnel committee, to discuss the powers and the duties of what council and mayor should or should not be doing? I mean, when can we set a date to do that?
Well, I mean.
What's the schedule?
We don't have to have that. If it's council's pleasure to have an executive session to discuss that, that's fine, but right now, there's a motion and a second on, on, under the committee item, so we'll establish a continuing committee to define the duties and the roles of the committees. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct. So, so there's a motion, there's a motion and a second on that.
And that is to work out the committees with the detail of the committees, just, I just need assistance to exactly what it is.
The roles and the responsibilities.
Oh, okay, role, roles and responsibilities.
Yes, and like definition, everybody does.
Okay, roles, respons, responsibilities of council on these committees?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, how about your roll call?
Uh, Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Vinesia?
No. Moving down here to purchase.
Who's going to be on the committee? Mr. Mayor, who are you going to? Mr. Mayor, who are you, Mr. Mayor, who are you going to put on that committee to do that?
Well, who's the mayor in town? It seems like I'm no longer the mayor, so who's the mayor?
I, I'm asking, I'm asking you, who are you going to nominate for that?
You're doing everything all behind the scenes, flip shot and running right past me, so I, you guys already know what you're going to do.
Mr. Mayor, I have been speaking to, to you about this since January, and you have pushed me to the side and boo-hooed me around and not taken me serious, when I have come to you over and over and over again with this issue. So who are you going to put on that committee?
Getting to a stalemate here, because I have told you my position, I don't think that it's the right thing to do, I don't think that it's necessary. We've got some very pressing issues in this town over here.
Absolutely, we do.
And those are the issues I like to focus on, not trying to make what's best for one particular person or another. I would like to focus my energies on what I could do to make Estill Manor a better place.
Right, so who's going to be on that committee? Who's going to be on that committee?
I don't care. I've already met with you on this once, and I don't agree with what we've, you know, I'm, I'm not going to be badgering around anymore and accuse of things that I don't do. I'm just not.
You mean, like saying, oh, yeah, we can do that, and then saying after the fact? No, I never agreed with you with that?
Some of the committee structures, I said, that seems like it makes sense, but some of them, I don't think that it makes sense. I'm not going to have my arm pulled out of my socket and beaten me over the head with to agree to something that I don't agree to. I don't see the necessity for it, okay? But you've been on council for what, just a couple of months or so?
Yes.
And you seem to know a lot more than I know. I've been only doing this for 24 years, it's never been an issue with even the most contentious councils that we've had over the years. It's never been an issue, it's now become an issue, because you want it to be an issue. So go ahead and, and pick your committee with what you want, and I won't be a part of it.
That's the mayor's job to do that.
But I will set who the people will be on the committees.
I'm asking you to do that. I'm asking you to tell me who's going to be on the committee.
I'm not going to be on that committee, nope, I'm not wasting my time anymore. I've done wasting my time.
Okay, then who do you nominate for that committee?
Figure out who you want on the committee to make it the way that you'd like it to be, Betsy, and, and then it's all over, fine.
As the mayor, you are supposed to tell us who's on that committee.
You're going to put the committee together the way that you would like it. I'm not going to be a part of this anymore. We've already decided that's what you want to do, so do it. I'm moving down to item number six, the purchase of a blower.
No, I'm not going any further until someone is on that committee.
I'm running, I'm going to stop the conversation with it.
Who is on that committee?
There is nobody that, I'm, I'm not on the committee. You pick who you want to be on that committee.
And that's fine, you don't, you don't have to be, but who are you going to be on that committee?
Ms. Owens, this is your baby right here, you pick who you want to be on that committee.
It's not my job.
Well, then it's not my job to continue beating a dead horse, I'm not doing it, sorry. We're moving the meeting along here. We have item number six, we're going to purchase a blower. I have a question. Two years ago, we spent $800 buying a blower. Why are we buying another one? $800. We were supposed to have spent $400 and some odd dollars, as I recall the conversation. Mr. Dills, this is prior to you coming on to the council. And we bought a blower that cost the city right around $800, but we had voted to spend $400. Now we're going to go out and get another blower, where is that blower at? Do we have one? Do we have one? Does anybody know that we have a blower in that building? Yes or no?
We have handheld blowers, yeah, we have some handheld blowers.
That's correct.
I think we have four and one of them works.
Only one of them work?
That's, I remember.
Hopefully, that's the $800 item that we spent, that that one works?
It's before our time, Mr. Mayor.
Now it's your present time right now, who's running Public Works Department? Who's on that committee?
No, I did not vote, I did, I have nothing to do with spending $800 on a blower, nothing.
You're running around me, what I asked is, what happened to the blower? Is it there now? Yes or no?
What blower?
We bought a blower a year and a half ago, two years ago, and the city spent $800, and if I'm right, I believe it was $840, and we spent more than, just about double what we voted on at the table that night. So my question is, do we, or do we not have that blower in the building?
Mayor, you opened your statement by saying that no one on council now was here, then none of us knows what blower you're talking about. You remember it so well, you even remember what it costs. Have you seen it lately?
I have not been in that building to be doing an inventory, that's why I keep on focusing and stating that it's important that we should have a fixed asset list, and council keeps on saying, "We don't want to do it." I guess I have to take time off from working, go over there and do, and do an inventory of what we have, but I shouldn't have to do that.
I, I believe the consultant is working on that.
Is she?
She is.
That's great. That's something that should have been long overdue. I was actually thinking that in the beginning of the year, we were a fresh, brand-new council, and we were going to take grip of everything that we're doing, and I don't see that that's really exactly happening. I'm just constantly being contradicted. So my question is, do we in fact have that $800 blower in that building? Yes or no? I heard that we have four blowers and three of them don't work. So the one that does work, is that a new one? Is that a real nice one?
It's a handheld blower.
Nobody knows that answer.
It's a handheld blower. Works very well.
They're all handheld blowers.
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
Some of them are backpacks.
Some of them are on wheels.
We're going to, we need to, we need to do a fixed asset inventory, we have it. I mean, before we start going out and buying more and more stuff, we don't even know what the hell, what the hell we have over there, we have to have a fixed asset. Late and stuff, we're not going to convene you at some.
Is this intermission?
I'm encouraged to hear that, uh, that was going over there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Number seven, that's, move on.
Zoom meetings going forward, equipment needed, what do we need here for that?
There, there was discussion, and I believe, Mr. Olson, you have made some comments in an email, I believe, or Mr. Lafferty, that there was some issues with, with the Zoom, and I just want to see what we have to do in the future. We don't have to discuss all the details, I just want to bring it to light that if there's some equipment or speakers or something that we need to do, let's get together and talk about it and make it happen.
So what do you think that we need to have?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I, I don't know without.
The Technology Committee, quite frankly, I think should get together and focus on what we want to do. Mr. Olson, I, I've got, I've got.
We should follow up with Verizon on the Verizon channel.
Okay. Obviously, I think I even heard just as of tonight that we had some type of a setup and it's been changed, I mean, you can't change the goalpost in the middle of the game. You have to have the correct standard.
Where, did you ever see that email about the Verizon channel?
I did.
I, I did not see that.
I, I, I kind of saw.
I'll, I'll find that and send that over to you.
Okay. But, well, well, if you, if you just let me know, or, or, you know, between us and Mr. Mailen, we, we can get things going here, but we just need direction from, from you and, and anyone else to make it work.
That was also approved already, too, to put that, yeah.
Council could understand what I'm going to say, and I don't make any apologies for this, it's unfortunate that it's happening, I bet you I am receiving nearly 100 solicitations a month. Everybody's wanting to say something about it. It's like, you're literally barrels under attack. The solicitation, one right after another, sometimes 10 a day. That's why if I saw something about Verizon, it just got passed. I focus on what I believe are the important things that I need to be turning in on and not soliciting.
Okay, so, so.
Matt's going to work on it.
Right, the Matt will work on.
And, uh, Olson, who was on your Technology Committee? Did that mean Julie, Ms. Sparks?
Yes.
I think, I think you're with Mr. Hughes the last time around, am I correct?
Yes. I saw an email from, I believe it came from Mr. Dills about Dumpster Day being on the agenda, I apologize, it didn't make it when I printed this, so I added it, but you had already said Saturday, October the 24th, is there anything else for Dumpster Day?
Yes, there were some stipulations. Mr. Dills, can you pull that up faster than I can?
Yeah, so there, so, uh, no yard waste, no shingles, limit of four tires per household, no rims.
Thank you, Mr. Dills.
You're welcome.
Will you get that to us so that we can put it on the website or just coordinate it with our office staff and so everyone knows, please?
Yes, sir.
Quite frankly, we really should.
That is a roll call, too.
Guys, what we really should do, I think we should pass this number of $55 if we send it to all the households, put out a postcard under the bulk mail, it could be a one, uh, piece of yellow cardboard, like stock, sent out. I think we could notify the public that, and, or, correct me if I'm wrong, but could we in fact actually use some of that Clean Community money to, something for notification of residents to, we keep it very specific as to Clean Community, maybe, just maybe even incorporating on there that we're having a little bit of a change in what we're doing with, um, like the normal Clean Community Day, and we're going to ask residents to adopt their streets as part of cleaning up our community.
If, if that's the route that you're going to take and people adopt their streets and bring trash bags to the dumpster, meaning litter, the, the Clean Communities can pay for that, but to, just to have people come for Dumpster Day and not bring litter, doesn't, for that, but to just to have people come for dumpster day and not bring litter, doesn't, it doesn't, I can't tie that in with the clean community screen.
Couldn't we also do this, people, I've seen many municipalities, they bag it up and they leave it on the side of the road, and the public works, uh, department comes and picks it up, or whatever they do with at that point.
That's what we're doing.
I can assume there's some proper channel, but that's one avenue that could be done. There are some streets that are adopted, you know, especially Lake Harbor Township,